I would like to call tonight's meeting of the City of Tacoma Park to City Council to order with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Fulter.
Present.
Councilmember Dubala.
Present.
Um, councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Should be on Zoom. Councilmember, councilmember Siemens, councilmember Hanzak, councilmember Small.
Present on Zoom.
Um, can't stop, won't stop.
Great, well, thank you all so much for joining us tonight. We have a bit of a hybrid situation going tonight, um, due to, uh, some folks being under the weather, um, and some travel plans. So I'm very fortunate, um, that we are able to leverage technology so that we're able to keep the ball rolling, even though, um, for some of us that are quite ill, they're, they're still trying to, trying to manage getting through, um, tonight's meeting. Um, so I'm gonna run through relative, relatively quickly, the agenda for tonight. Um, we'll start with a proclamation, um, in honor of Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June the 7th. Um, we'll have our public comments and general public comments. Um, also, just, um, in terms of the main items, we'll have a presentation this evening. Um, the quarterly financial report for the third quarter. Um, it should be about a 10-minute presentation or so. And then we'll have our voting session, and it'll be the first reading ordinance approving FY 2024 budget amendment number four, resolution accepting modified administrative regulations addressing the process to request evaluate in advance traffic calming, and then a resolution accepting modified administrative regulation addressing the process to request evaluate in advance sidewalk installations and rescinding resolution 201532. We'll then have two work sessions. One is an update on, um, planning for the November 5th, uh, city elections and the recommended code amendments. And the last item will be the library construction update. In terms of upcoming agendas, on, um, next Wednesday, June the 12th, council will be meeting at 7:30. We'll have two proclamations that evening. Um, the first is a pollinator week proclamation, um, and then there's also a proclamation recognizing emergency manager Ron Hardy. We'll have a presentation on the results of the Laurel Avenue traffic study, and then we'll have a number of items for voting. The second reading ordinance approving the FY 2024 budget amendment number four, first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code Title V, Chapter 5.18, Maryland Valid Voting and Chapter 5.12 Fair Election Practices, as well as a single reading ordinance approving procurement of three police vehicles. Uh, our work session that evening will consist of the emergency operations plan, as well as administrative regulations regarding the use of sub, uh, certain public facilities. Um, as a reminder, Sunday, June the 16th is Father's Day. Wednesday, June 19th is Juneteenth. City offices and facilities are closed for the Juneteenth holiday, and therefore Wednesday, June the 19th, the City Council will not meet. On Sunday, June the 23rd through Wednesday, June the 26th, the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference will be happening in Ocean City, and many of us will be attending that conference, and therefore Wednesday, June the 26th, the City Council will not meet. Uh, and so that takes us through the end of the month. So with that, I'm going to move on to our proclamation for this evening. June 7th as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, whereas the first day in June is National Gun Violence Awareness Day, I'm sorry, the first Friday in June is National Gun Violence Awareness Day in honor and, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to end this public health crisis. And whereas every day, 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of nearly 18,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other, in other high-income countries. And whereas, Maryland has 796 gun deaths this year, at a rate of 13.3 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $10.5 billion each year, of which 383 thou, 383.9 million is paid by taxpayers. Maryland has the highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas, gun violence prevention is in, is more important than ever, as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and increase in city gun violence. And whereas, in 2013, Hadia Peddleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and a group of Hadia's friends asked her classmates to commemorate, commemorate her life by wearing orange on her birthday, the first Friday in June, a color they choose because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, to recognize the 27th birthday of Hadia, Hadija Peddleton on June 7th, 2024, the first Friday in June, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia Peddleton and other victims of gun violence, as well as the loved ones of those victims. And whereas, by wearing orange in, on June 7th, 2024, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to gun violence, to reduce gun violence, and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have them, and to encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore, I, Talisha Circe, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, proclaim June 7th, 2024, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Tacoma Park, to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. And so many of you may see, um, many of us are wearing orange, um, stickers and orange tops, um, in honor of, um, recognizing National Gun Violence Awareness Day. So with that, we're going to move forward on public comments on voting items. Do we have any public comments on voting items?
Okay. Do we have any virtual public comments on voting items this evening?
No.
Thank you very much. Do we have any general public comments this evening?
Hi, Linda Pence Gunther, Ward 1, and yes, I'm back. I'm sorry if you're sick of seeing me here, I'm actually sick of seeing me here, but I'm here once again, at the third time of asking, to see why Tacoma Park continues to be a glaring omission from the list of U.S. cities that have already passed a resolution that asks our government to embrace the goals of the U.N. Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, the biggest gun in the world. Not only should Tacoma Park already be on the list of cities that have passed this resolution, it should have been one of the first to pass it. I have twice provided you with a link to a template for this resolution. All you have to do is insert the words Tacoma Park, where it says, "Your City." Broadly, the resolution calls on the United States to lead a global effort to prevent nuclear war, and asks the U.S. government to do five things. Actively pursue a verifiable agreement among nuclear armed states to eliminate their nuclear arsenals. Renounce the option of using nuclear weapons first. End the sole unchecked authority of any president to launch a nuclear attack. Take U.S. nuclear weapons off hair trigger alert, and cancel the plan to replace its entire arsenal with enhanced weapons. In April, you mentioned that drafting this resolution had sort of slipped through the cracks. Granted, you have a lot on your plate, but let's look ahead to November. Let's revisit that phrase, "The sole unchecked authority of any president to launch a nuclear attack." Sole unchecked authority. Sure, we're not going to abolish nuclear weapons overnight, but if all the cities in the United States called for a nuclear ban through a resolution like this, policy would change. That's why Tacoma Park should speak up. I'm going to keep annoyingly reminding you that for reasons that remain both unclear and unconvincing, you got rid of the nuclear-free Tacoma Park Committee of citizens who did this work for you. So now you have this thorn in your side at the microphone instead. And actually, we are still doing this work for you, because here is the resolution printed up, and I've taken the liberty of doing the heavy lift by inserting the words Tacoma Park for you into the document. And if that sounds sarcastic, I apologize, but we've been patient, and we've been nice, and now we feel frustrated and exasperated. You don't have to be an international specialist or a policy wonk to understand why this resolution is important. You just have to be able to count to 7.9 billion, and I grant you, that would take quite a while, but that's the current population on planet Earth right now, and that's who would be gone if there's an all-out nuclear war. This resolution is low-hanging fruit for Tacoma Park and would reaffirm the city's commitment to its nuclear-free zone status. Isn't it high time the City of Tacoma Park passed this resolution?
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Okay, come on down.
Yes, so cordial salutations this evening. Thank you all for your service to my community. I'm here representing, uh, Ward 3, um, and the youth in our community of Tacoma Park, specifically the, the demographic of soccer players. Um, we've, uh, been proposing a new project here in Ward 3 called the Tacoma Tiki Taka, which is a specialized training facility which hosts artificial intelligence, uh, sport training rooms, which automate an experience for the youth in the community to go out and, uh, play without the need of a coach or, uh, anyone in particular. This demand has come out from just a need of players to, or just youth to go out and do something productive, get better themselves, and this space isn't available. It's just open, green space, they go out into the field, and it's a chaotic atmosphere, which is, mm, always, uh, very competitive, and the middle schoolers and high schools are often competing with, uh, just a plethora of, of, of players. So, um, this proposition hosts a space which values are in three areas. Um, one is education, offering scholarships toward and capacity building for the youth. Two is community health, where after these training sessions occur, there's a space where the players can, uh, eat and recover their, their lost energy with nutrient-dense foods, all provided by the 25, 50, and 75, 5-mile radius. And the third facet is through conservation, which, uh, basically organizes these youth into our public spaces around the city, so that they can plant pollinator habitats, rebuild soil, facilitate our natural waste back into our green spaces. So basically, this, this area brings in our youth through a common ground of sport, teaches them values, and encourages them to engage with their community through things that bring us all together, socially equitable spaces, rather than areas which people are competing to get around. So, um, this is more or less just a socialization, uh, encouraged by, uh, this youth committee, and, uh, as a natural, uh, Tacoma Park native, I feared I'd finish my last 40 seconds presenting a piece of artwork for the benefit of our public servants, and it is in the form of none other than a soccer shoe. It's, I, it's called the Know Your Farmer FC Dunks. And here we see, um, soil, uh, this represented is soil. We have some skulls here, which represent a nutmeg, where when the ball go, when you do a move and you get past a player, you know, some people feel discouraged. We say, "No, let that discouragement, discouragement be composted in the soil. Let the sun's rays of our city nourish them, put them back into fruits such as nutrient-dense fruits, such as bananas, lemons, broccoli vegetables, and, uh, have it flourish into a pollinator habitat." So hopefully you enjoy. That's my words.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Do we have any virtual public comments this evening?
We, we may have Mary Machuwi online, I'm, I'm checking.
Oh, you made it, Ms. Machuwi? Ms. Machuwi, we are, we're closing out our public comments. Are you, are you planning to make any comments this evening?
Thank you for acknowledging.
No worries.
Yes, please. Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little late, I was waiting to see about the tornado warning, whether it was extended to us. And thank you all, everybody, for being here, and I hope many of you all, if you're in Gatorsburg, I suggest you go home quickly, it might hit there. Um, I started Parents Especially as Adults in 2009, and I heard that the city has for two, has a two-year, uh, hire for a licensed social worker for mental health issues. That's a step in the right direction. It's not enough, nearly enough, but it's a step in the right direction, and I wanted to thank you, and, um, my, my son desperately needs a job with a regular work schedule. He, he's virtually, if you, if you don't know from day to day whether you have to go to work or not, and includes holidays, weekends, holidays, anytime, at what time of the day, had to be there before 6:30 this morning. Tomorrow it's 10 o'clock, they keep changing the hours and the dates. It's like you have no freedom. He can't, and he's scared, he's scared to ask for another jo, to get another job. It took him two and a half years. When you have autism, it's very tough to get a job. If we had a program here in Tacoma Park to help people like him who are qualified, he's held his job down for nine years with an irregular work schedule. He could help, hold a, a, a moderate job, he could do it. If he could do it for nine years with that, he could work, he could work a 40-hour, regular skill, skill job. Anyways, and others like him, please, please, we need a job program, please. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Machuwi. Okay. Um, seeing no more, um, public comments this evening, we're gonna move into council comments. Councilmember Small.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the, um, opportunity to stand stalwart in the face of, uh, weather with the esteemed members of this council who showed up, um, to wear orange, uh, and I, I want that 15 seconds back as I begin my comments. No, um, I, I did want to say a couple of things about things that are going on in, uh, the ward and/or the city that kind of, uh, flex together, and that is, um, it has to do with some of the, um, things about civility and, um, feeling like you're connected, and feeling like you're a part of things, and some of the things that, um, that Ms. Machuwi actually reminds herself a lot. Um, and it is a, uh, ironic story, it's going to begin with an assault, um, and then it's going to end with a homage to the wonder of neighborhoods. I'm gonna try and do it fast, 'cause I'm already a minute in. So, um, the residents of Ward 6 will happily note that it's been about a week and a half, I think, solid, that we have not heard any sort of street preaching, uh, bouncing off of the bus terminal and into the neighborhoods. Um, I am exceedingly pleased about that, because I, I did have to inadvertently get assaulted again in the process of trying to speak reasonably to people about said things, 'cause I don't believe people should be angry for Jesus. Um, but, uh, insofar as that's true, that's like an actual act of violence perpetuated on a person, um, that could escalate really easily, and doesn't or didn't because I knew what I was getting into or what I could do in the situation. That isn't always the case, and so I'm going to tell a story, I'm gonna say the facts of the thing, and it's gonna mean one thing to children who are not watching this, and it's gonna mean another thing in reality, and that is, that over the weekend, I hopped off the porch in order to catch rec with a dog in order to save the mayor from a potential dog interaction. Now, what that really was, was me casually sitting on the stoop, listening to the stereo as the mayor was walking down the street with her lovely but little dog, while one of the neighbor's kids, um, had decided to go out for a walk with his mother with her significantly larger dog, um, right in the age group where he was not going to wait to put the harness or the leash on the dog properly. Um, and since he was small enough, the dog saw the other dog and was like, "Hey, mayor's dog." And the mayor's dog is old, and apparently doesn't really like other dogs that much at the times. So it got a little hectic. Um, and I was able to successfully go talk to Francesca, the dog, who, 'cause Louie, my dog, plays with that dog, and like, got her back over where she was supposed to go, high-fived the mayor, and the mayor went on about her, uh, stroll around the neighborhood. And, uh, I said that intently, because, um, at the end of it, uh, when I was talking to, uh, the child's mother about what had happened, um, and she was telling him that he had, uh, she looked at him and said, you know, "I told you late," you know? So he busted himself at this point, and he was embarrassed, and I was like, "Look, man, nothing happened, don't worry about it." And a lot of things like that happen, um, in a neighborhood, and neighborhoods turn over and they change, and there are some things that are short-term, and there are things that are long-term and enduring, and ideally, it's the feeling of camaraderie that neighbors have, and their ability to, uh, be neighborly. And with regard to government, it usually is a really willing and responsive set of civic actors. And, uh, so I just wanted to say, uh, before we make the turn into whatever acrimony is going to be, or future acrimony, that I appreciate the efforts of, um, the staff to, um, address some of the real lingering and nagging things that were sticking in my craw, or, um, in my hat, or wherever you stick them. Um, and, uh, I think that that is really cool, so I just wanted to tell you guys, thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Gibson.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, to, um, comment on, um, Ms. Gunther's, uh, statement, asking us to, um, to, uh, consider signing the U.N. Pro, uh, Treaty of Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. Um, I apologize that I did not follow up earlier, but I would like us to reconsider, not, us to consider doing that, I see no reason why we cannot. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Fulter?
Does, I was gonna say something about Flower Avenue, but I wanna make sure that Kara has a chance to say.
She's not gonna be able to, her voice is gone.
Great. Um, so first of all, very little sleep week for me. Uh, my daughter's at Senior Beach Week, uh, so if we could wrap this up early and then start it again at 3:00 a.m., that would really work for me right now. Um, so, uh, first of all, I wanna thank Councilmember Hanzak for a good time at the Flower Avenue Black Party, uh, this past weekend. Um, and then also, I wanna recognize that I saw at least a couple of different Ward 1 members there, I saw Tom Gagliardi there, I didn't see Seth Grimes there, I know that he was there, um, and I just wanna appreciate other people coming out, uh, to see other parts of Tacoma Park and not just staying in their own part all the time. Um, this week, I have a lot going on, I'm gonna go, probably, might, might see the mayor there at Blair High School on Friday, um, they're doing sort of a political science fair, uh, where we get to hear their different ideas. Um, and then, of course, on Sunday, I will be at Tacoma Park Pride Parade, uh, with some other Girl Scouts. Um, and I would really appreciate anybody from Ward 1 coming out to the police meeting that will be here at 7, and on the, uh, on the 11th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., um, in the community center, so please come out with your questions, concerns, or, uh, you know, positive feedback for the police that you have for them. Um, and then two opportunities for tie-dying. Uh, I'm gonna be helping on June 13th at 12:00 p.m. at Piney Branch Park, I think that's the right time. Uh, it's the last day of school, so, uh, our recreation department is hosting a end-of-the-year party for our youth over in Piney Branch, and I'll be, be providing tie-dye dye, uh, you'll need to bring your own, uh, item to dye. And then also, on June 30th, I will also host a tie-dye party from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m., um, over at my mom's house on Maple Avenue, uh, so you can come there after the farmer's market, that's a Sunday, uh, on June 30th. Uh, and my hope is that everybody can get ready to celebrate 4th of July really properly in Tacoma Park in their tie-dye. Uh, so that is all I have to say, thank you.
Awesome. I'm just gonna do a quick check to see if I see any other hands, okay. Um, okay, perfect. Um, so, uh, just want to, again, thank everyone for the wonderful event-filled weekend. Um, I was busy, I wanna send my appreciation to, um, the Bright Lights Baptist Church, um, and for being so, so opening to me on, on Saturday, as, as they welcomed their, um, new pastor, Pastor Davis. Uh, the, uh, Truck Garden, um, in Old Town was awesome, awesome, awesome. Um, want to send my appreciation, uh, to Laura Barclay in Main Street Tacoma for putting on another wonderful event. Um, and the Flower Avenue event was just so, so lovely. I, I really, I know Councilmember Hanzak, her voice is gone, but, um, want to really send my appreciation to Councilmember Hanzak, Discover Long Branch, Amber from Healing, Healing Counseling Services, I believe, is the name of her organization, but, um, they have just been, they worked tirelessly to pull this event off. I wanna thank all of our staff, I saw so many of our staff there, police officers, HCD, um, clerk was there, signing people up to vote, um, Washington Adventist University was there, cheer. It was, um, really a wonderful time for so many people in our community to come together and to just be in fellowship, and I cannot tell you how many residents of Ward 5 came up and said, "This is wonderful, we've never had an event like this in, in our community." Um, and so we're really appreciative that you all are paying so much attention to us. So I really, again, wanna send all of my sincere appreciation to every single person, um, that helped to bring that, um, bring that Black Party to life, it, it really was a fun time. Um, want to, uh, definitely thank those that came out and provide, uh, provided public comments this evening. Um, Ms. Gunther, you are on the rolling list, so you're one step closer to us being, having you scheduled. So that resolution is on the list of, um, upcoming, um, topics for inclusion on the agenda, so I just wanna make sure that you're aware of that. Um, it's a little hard, 'cause June, we're not having a lot of meetings because of different holidays, but we are trying to work to get that, um, resolution on the agenda. Um, the, um, other thing, uh, thank you, Ms. Machuwi, and I'm glad that you saw that, um, the, um, that the Police Department has made that hire, so really, really grateful for our police chief for keeping that ball rolling. Um, in terms of, uh, this week, I mean, it's, the parties just don't stop. Um, so I will be with Councilmember, um, Fulter at the So I will be with Councilmember Fulter at the Blair High School Gen Z Political Convention. It's such a wonderful event to be able to see how smart and talented our kids are in thinking through important social justice and political science topics. I will be on June the 8th at the Montgomery County Wear Orange Event, which is a walk that's hosted by Moms Against Gun Violence. So that will be in the morning. And also, the Azalea Awards is on Saturday. I want to encourage people to, to vote for the Azalea Awards, and that's on Saturday at 1:00 p.m. And then on Sunday, I will be at Pride. So I'm super excited about being able to, to be in the parade, but also Pride is always just such a fun time. So with that, not seeing any other lights, I will turn things over to our city manager, Mr. DiSpirito, to provide us with city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, and guests. From the Housing and Community Development Department, Tacoma Park Arts call for performances. The Arts and Humanities Division is seeking submissions for future performances in the Tacoma Park Arts Series, which provides a performance venue in the community center auditorium, honorariums, extensive promotion, and a professional recording of the performance by the city's TV crew. There is no submission fee, and applicants do not need to be Tacoma Park residents. Performances may include music, theater, dance, multimedia performances, and so on. The submission deadline is June 30th, and there's more information and an online application form. A link will be included tomorrow in the posted city manager's comments on the city website. Grant applications. In addition to the FY25 National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund applications, our grants coordinator, Patty Mallon, submitted two additional applications last week. One is a submission to the Maryland Department of Transportation's Kim Lamphier Bike Way Network to fund the design of Section D, also known as the DC Connector of the New Ave Bike Way. And two, a partner submission with the Village of Tacoma Park to the Maryland Department of Aging to support a small home repair program for senior residents. From our police department, the police department is hosting our first annual diaper drive. The primary objective of the diaper drive is to alleviate the financial burden on our residents, thus enabling them to use their resources towards other essential needs. By providing access to diapers through community support, we can make a meaningful difference in the lives of those who require assistance in our community. This collection drive will run from June 1st to through June 30th, and we will be asking various businesses to partner with us, and will also challenge our city employees and fire department partners to drop off packs or boxes of diapers if they are able to do so. To ensure fair distribution and accommodate as many families as possible, we will limit each family to two packs of diapers per child. We can only accept new, unopened packs of diapers. Of course, boxes of diapers are also welcome. Your support matters. Your donation, no matter how big or small, is a step towards brighter futures and stronger families. Thank you for being a part of this vital cause. Let's make every little one feel loved and cared for. Distribution information is as follows. For Tacoma Park families who need diapers, these will be distributed by appointment only at the Tacoma Park Police Department in July. Your point of contact is Kathy Plevy at kathyp@tacoma park md.gov or at her phone number, area code 301-891-7142. Be on the lookout for a form to fill out that will be in English, Spanish, and Hymaric. An announcement will be made when the sign-up sheet is posted. We will share a link tomorrow in the posted city manager's comments that will have even more information. We would also like to welcome the newest member of the Tacoma Park Police Department, Jill Larson, who is a licensed certified social worker clinical. Ms. Larson is coming to us from the Montgomery County Crisis Center to provide mental health, mobile outreach, petition evaluations, on-scene support, domestic violence lethality screens and referrals, on-scene grief support, and other resources as needed for frontline officers. In addition to supportive mental health resources, Ms. Larson is a current crisis intervention team instructor for thought disorders and will provide in-service training and consultation. Prior to becoming a social worker, Ms. Larson is a 17-year retired police officer hailing from St. Paul, Minnesota. Her experience includes working in the human and sex trafficking units, negotiations, investigations liaison, and as a field training officer. Ms. Larson is looking forward to providing resources and cultivating a supportive collaboration of our, for our frontline staff responding to calls for service. Please welcome Ms. Larson to the Tacoma Park Police Department. From Public Works, Wednesday, June 19th is Juneteenth, an observed holiday. Therefore, the regular Wednesday collection will move to Thursday, June 20th for trash, recycling, and food waste. This will affect all of Ward Four and Ward Five and a portion of Ward One. From the city clerk's office, the deadline to apply for appointment to city boards and committees has been extended to Monday, June 10th. Please check the website for complete information about vacancies and how to apply. And from the city manager's office, a staff shout-out. Public Works would like to give a shout-out for Blanca Flores Ramirez. Blanca joined the City of Tacoma Park as the Facility Maintenance Supervisor in the fall of 2022. She had previously worked for the city several years earlier as the building maintenance specialist. The Facility Maintenance Division is intended to be a two-person operation with a supervisor and a specialist handling facility needs and overseeing the work of contractors. However, the city has not been able to fill the specialist role yet, and Blanca has been managing facility maintenance operations entirely solo. Recently, Blanca completed some very significant repairs in the community center, including addressing a longstanding leak in the atrium ceiling, which she did personally, and replacing the HVAC system for the Human Resources and Housing and Community Development offices, for which she developed the scope of work, managed the bid process, selected the vendor, and oversaw the installation. In addition to these projects, Blanca continues to handle facility maintenance and repair needs and interacts with all department staff in a friendly, helpful, and collaborative manner. For that, we want to recognize Blanca and thank her for her outstanding work. That concludes my report this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And so with that, we're going to move into our first agenda item this evening, the quarterly financial report for the third quarter.
Excellent. Thank you, Andrew. Mayor and council, it's my pleasure to present on behalf of staff the fiscal year report for the third quarter, or Q3, for current fiscal year FY24. This was prepared by our finance department, led by Susan Chung, who's also present this evening. This report is available online for the public, and we have the actual fiscal year 24 financial report available as well as this presentation. So this covers the period of January 1st, 2024, to March 31st of 2024, the third quarter. Purpose is to summarize revenue and expenditure, including all budget amendments. In this case, we've done three budget amendments so far this year, to identify discrepancies in in-year trends and to enable inquiry and investigation of inconsistencies. So that's the purpose of this review. The, if you could go to the next slide, please. The total year-to-date actual revenue across all funds is $29 million, or 82% of the budgeted The total year-to-date actual expenditures are $24.7 million, or 48% of the budgeted amount. The excess of revenue over expenditures, this $4.3 million difference, is due to unspent funds in the General Fund, Stormwater Management Fund, and Special Revenue Fund. And this slide provides some more detail, fund summary. So in essence, technically, a, at the moment, a General Fund $4.9 million surplus, again, due to unspent funds to date. Special Revenue Fund is 160, almost $167,000 surplus due to pending projects. We're making, we make our notation with respect to the ARPA, ARPA funds. We have delayed revenue recognition in the federal grant. Stormwater Management Fund is $355,000 surplus due to pending projects. In other words, projects that are underway but have not, we have not completely expended the funds for those. And the Speed Camera Fund, $266,000 deficit due to delayed revenue from red light cameras and reduced revenue from speed cameras. And the delay was in getting permitting from S H A to our vendor conduit, which in essence, we were not able to, we're not able to implement the red light camera program as soon as we wished. And reduced revenue from speed cameras is a positive thing in that that reflects greater level of compliance and traffic safety, i.e. fewer citations needed to be issued. The General Fund is the chief operating fund of the city. It supports the regular daily activities, including police protection, street parking maintenance, and general administrative functions. Primary General Fund revenue sources are taxes and utility fees and intergovernmental revenue. The General Fund revenues total $26.9 million, or 92%. We received 92% of what we had budgeted in the current fiscal year, and that is illustrated in the pie chart that is shown here. General Fund expenditures are $21.9 million, or 60% of the FY24 budgeted amount. That also is shown in a pie chart on this slide. General Fund revenue and expenses whose percentages, whose percentage collected or expended differs by 25% or more year-over-year is considered significant. We provide some comparison to quarter three from last year. We are a little bit ahead of where we were last year in terms of expenditures at this point in time in the fiscal year. This slide represents significant differences in revenue collection and shows comparison between the last fiscal year FY23 and the current fiscal year FY24 at this juncture, i.e. the period ended March 31st. Penalties and interest due, due to late payment. And you can see the data there, the comparison. Additions and abatements, that's property tax refunds. Use of money and property. Passport services. Personal property tax. Sale of city property. And we have provided some explanations on those differences between the two years. The significant differences in expenditure collection between the two fiscal years. Police investigative, police investigation services. The difference was due to an increase in overtime for FY24 to address the increase in violent crime that we've unfortunately experienced. Recreation community programs, the difference was due to staff vacancy for part of the period in last year in FY23. Recreation camps, this was due to, the difference is due to the timing of camp programs between the two fiscal years. Planning, the difference is due to a staff vacancy in the division during the last year's reporting period. And finally, community economic development, the difference is due to a staff vacancy in the division that presently exists. Oh, okay. All right, I get that. This table illustrates expenditures by funds. Want to highlight Speed Camera Fund and Stormwater Fund. Speed Camera Fund revenue totals were 20, 23% of the budgeted amount. Again, we're showing continued reduction in revenue in Speed Camera as compliance increases. Expenditures total 46% of the budgeted amount. Red light camera revenue was included in the current FY24 budget, but revenue has not been realized due to the delay that I had previously mentioned in the program implementation due to a delay in permitting by the state. Revenue shortfall directly impacts the fund balance, resulting in an inter-fund transfer from the General Fund. Beginning in FY25, the new budget, seven cameras will be installed along New Hampshire Avenue, Piney Branch Avenue, and Philadelphia Avenue. So we are looking at a revenue stream that will really, we anticipate commence with the new fiscal year, July 1st of this year, which is FY25. The Stormwater Fund revenues total 96% of the budgeted amount. These are received from the county monthly, and expenditures total 36% of the budgeted Next slide, please. Thank you. This just illustrates that on May 16th, the tax, tax rate was shared with, as the mayor and council approved with their second reading of the new FY25 budget, and the tax rate was remanded to the county and state by the Finance Department. And we are presenting the third quarter financial report and ultimately the Budget Amendment Work Session, which is also, that was discussed and will be presented for council's consideration tonight. In June, June 5th, this will be the fourth Budget Amendment first reading. That's this evening. June 12th, next Wednesday, the FY24 Fourth Budget Amendment second reading. So that will be the final regular meeting of the mayor and council in June, and thus the last council meetings in the current fiscal year FY24. And finally, on June 30th, this just acknowledges the end, the literal end of the current fiscal year FY24. So at this point, finance staff and I stand ready to try and answer any questions or receive comments that the mayor and council or the public may have.
Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. Andrew, could you go back to the slide where you had divvied up? Yes. So I wanted to, to talk a little bit about this. insofar as it does seem to at least connot some significant growth in the local economy, I would think. If the 98% collected budget for '23 was $156,000 and we're at 64% in the third quarter, at $129,000, I have to feel like that shows at least to some degree a city on the up and up with regard to business activities. And so that's certainly a good thing. I did want to know about what the use of money and property line here actually means. And presumably, like, is it investment money that is in the bank? Or is it some other sort of thing? Because that was the only part of this part that I didn't necessarily understand.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the council. The personal property tax for fiscal year '24 is, we collected $129,000 by March 2024. And last year, we collected $156,000. So, the collection of the personal property taxes last this year is mainly because of the timing. It has nothing to do with the economic activity. We don't usually receive the money promptly from the county. So that's why the revenue amount is lower in this year than last year.
Oh, yeah, well, notwithstanding that, that's, I'm certainly not disappointed necessarily on where you are with the collection of this, of this money. But if we are at 64% of anticipated revenues or 64% of collective revenues, and we're at $129,000 for this year, but during the same time period, we had 98% of expected revenues and we had $156,000, it would seem like there is at least some positive business being generated in those personal property establishments to make the collection of more monies available. So I'm just bigging up the generalized economy there.
Okay, thank you.
My question, though, while you're up here, is the line, a couple of lines up where it says use of money and property?
Okay. That use of money and property is mainly referred to the interest income that we receive in all the checking account and all those investment accounts that the city have. The investment account include, we have CD deposits with MBS and also, we have money in the Maryland Investment Pool. And these are the two main investments that is in the city's portfolio. And the rest of them are mainly in the city's liquid fund, which is in the checking account. And because of the increase in the interest rate, which was provided by the federal chairman in this year and last year, that's why our interest income tremendously increased.
Okay, and then, Andrew, if you could go a couple more slides in and then I can. That, well, this, I think this will do it. So, yes, and then the other question I have is the other way. With regard to the speed camera revenues, I am fully in favor of the fact that if a change in the hearts and minds of drivers has accurately made a reduction in traffic speed in certain areas. But as a person who has apps, I, I wonder about that sometimes because of whether or not you just start and stop in the proper places or slow down in the right place where your app tells you what to do. I'm curious about whether or not there is a nexus between the public policy reality of trying to regulate traffic speeds and the attendant reality of people overtly avoiding speeding cameras, that there's some other place where that is lost revenue that is fundamentally uncapturable in any other way. And I don't know if that's a longer-term conversation for us as a, as a city or not. But it would seem to me like red light camera revenue is one kind of thing and maintaining a anti-speed corridor situation is another kind of thing. And I just, I don't know. I, my porch faces Wildwood, which is one of the things that's obeying my existence. But since it also faces Wildwood, it faces New Hampshire. And I can just tell you at 3:00 in the morning, people don't necessarily see, they seem to be well aware of the fact that we're not running those cameras the way that we should. And so I just wonder about some of these things with regard to the thirst that we have as a city for anticipating new revenues and the effectiveness of a city in using its regulatory tools to the advantage of positive economic ends. And the last thing was with regard to the reserve, since it looks like the reserve is at four. And at the end of the day, we're always talking about percentage points in operating budgets for the General Fund and whether or not you feel comfortable with the collection or its placement. Like, if, if suddenly we did have a civil war and we only had three months of operating expenses, are we solid or that kind of thing?
For the collection of the revenue so far, it's pretty much like last year. There's not, not much difference. And few, and I feel comfortable for this year that I cannot foresee that we, we will have surplus in our General Fund. But I feel like that we are steadily performing, just like last year. So I don't see any significant change from last year to this year.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Dibala?
Yes. Good evening, good evening, everybody. I had a question in a slightly different direction. On the list of funds where we haven't spent yet what we thought we would, Stormwater in particular, do we think we will spend out the entire fund by June 30th? That's a pretty, um, Stormwater in particular, that's a pretty big amount to run, to get through in another.
Yeah, I, and I believe the Stormwater Fund, particularly the Capital Improvement Project, I think the, the project does not move at the same pace as what we expected. So that's why the expenditure amount is much lower than what was budgeted at the beginning of the year. So this is something that we are watching and we want to see if the Public Works Director can give us some more detailed information. But maybe some projects cannot be completed this year. She will be moving the remaining budget to the fiscal year '25 in our first budget amendment of fiscal year '25.
Great, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Chung. And I think Councilmember Dibala was, you know, picking up kind of where she left off. And I think the, the challenge with the Q3 report is that it's always hard. Like, your revenues are in, but your expenditures are not, right? You don't see that until Q4. So the, there's a couple of places where I'm not as much concerned about our ability to cover the Stormwater Fund as much as the Speed Camera Fund. It's just giving me a lot of heartburn because we are already at, over, over the, the revenue totals and we're only at 46% of the budgeted amount of expenditures. And so I guess, you know, and again, hindsight is 20/20. We, we all agree, we, we should not have been counting our chickens before they were hatched in terms of that Speed Camera Fund, in terms of putting budgeted line items in that, in that account when we didn't have a clear understanding of how, how much money was going to come in. Are there concerns about this particular, because of the shortage of the revenues, once we hit Q4, really going over, over budget in terms of the Speed Camera Fund and in terms of what we have set aside versus what we need to spend?
In terms of Speed Camera and Red Light Camera Fund, we can see actually in our Fourth Budget Amendment that we have, we have made changes, made adjustment to the revenue. We actually make adjustment to the complete 1.3 million of the Red Light Camera revenue. And we also make some adjustment to the Speed Camera revenue because of the reduction of the tickets or fines from the Speed Camera Fund. And at the same time, because we are not having the Red Light Camera program implemented, a lot of the contractual costs related to the Red Light Camera are not going to be used. So we also have a reduction of our expenditure in the Red Light Camera. And there are other small reduction as well in the contract costs and in other project costs of the Speed Camera Fund as well. So, as we can see, I don't know if you look at the Fourth Budget Amendment, we are planning to move $700,000 from our General Fund and it's called inter-fund transfer from General Fund to the Speed Camera. Because without the, the inter-fund transfer, the Speed Camera and Red Light Camera Fund will be in deficit. The deficit amount, let me, let me look at the, the fund summary. In the projected budget of '24, we're looking at a deficit amount of $790,000. And because we have a beginning fund summary in the Speed Camera of $139, even with a transfer of $700,000 from the General Fund, our ending balance for the projected '24 would be $50,000 only. So that's a very, very low fund balance. But with the Fourth Budget Amendment, it looks like that because of the removal of the revenue as well as the reduction of the expenditure, the deficit amount is a little less. It, we estimate it to be 3, $737,000. And with the transfer of $700,000 from the General Fund, the ending balance would be $101,000. So it's a little bit more than we projected in the fiscal year '24 budget. So it, it's not a lot for $101,000, but it's better than $50,000 for what we expected at the beginning of the year. So we are very hopeful the implementation of the Red Light Camera program will help boost the, the revenue of this fund. And then we will have reserve in the Red Light Camera as well as in the Speed Camera. There will be two separate reserves. So we are going to track the expenditure of the Speed Camera and the expenditure of the Red Light separately.
Great, thank you. And thank you for walking through that, that transfer because I know that was a question that came up last week during the Budget Amendment discussion. The other thing that I saw was about the ARPA Fund and delayed revenue recognition. So is that, that's not us having any issues in terms of the actual receipt of, you know, that portion of the grant? It's just the timing, right?
The, the Treasury Fund was already given to us in 2022, July, and 2023. So we already have the, the funds received from the Department of Treasury. But because this is a federal grant, the practice of federal grant is we need to recognize, realize the expenditure before we can apply the revenue. So, so, so that's why we want to make sure that the, the revenue is there, but we don't recognize it until we spend the money.
Spend the money. Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, I'm not seeing any other lights or hands. All right, wonderful. Thank you very much for this presentation. I apologize that you have to come back here a second week.
Sure.
But we appreciate you taking time out. Okay, so next, we're going to move into our voting session. Just as a reminder, because we're taking a hybrid approach to tonight's meeting, we're going to do a roll call for, for all of the items. Okay, the first item is the First Reading Ordinance approving FY '24 Budget Amendment Number Four. Would someone like to move?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Small for moving and Councilmember Fulcher for seconding. Are there any comments or points of discussion for this item? City Manager Dispierto?
Yes, we're happy to entertain any comments or questions. But I will note for the mayor councils and public's knowledge that just in the last few days, we, we have some additional funds to apply and some, I guess, less revenue in one particular category that we will like, we, we will need appropriately to apply to the second reading. And that would be next week. This is going to be in a staff report that will go to you for next week. So there will be a modification of the version that you have before you this evening for First Reading and what those, what, what those modifications are. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a, we, on the good news side, we had received notice of a dividend, an insurance dividend that can be applied as a, I guess, a one-time revenue source. So that needs to be reflected. And on the flip side, we were notified by the county just the other day.
Today.
Today. Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was yesterday or today. And we had a meeting with them today to discuss the fact that on the cable television revenues, that that will be less, that apparently, and it's subject to verification, but the Comcast had supplied the county with some inaccurate information about the number of subscribers we had. And that's going to be, the county appropriately is going to be doing an audit and, and trying to confirm all figures. But it does affect the current fiscal year FY '24 and that includes the current quarter. Well, it's both the quarter three and quarter four of the current year. We are in the neighborhood, I'll say, of about $26,000 less revenue. And of course, it's a concerning trend for the future going forward in that this is a trend of less revenue, not more. We, we knew that it has been declining. We've known that as subscribership has declined generally in cable. But this is a steeper decline than we were aware of. Should that be verified? And for the time being, we're going to go with the information we have. We have information that's a little bit more solid for the third quarter, fourth quarter, because we may not, in terms of when we receive that information, we'll see how much of that we have by the end of our fourth quarter to reflect. But we'll do our best job to conservatively reflect that loss of revenue in the modified Budget Amendment coming for second reading next week.
Great. And City Manager Dispierto, I think some folks online are having some difficulty hearing. So if you could just speak up a little bit. But just to recap, for those that might, might have had some audio issues, we will have an amendment of the FY '24 Budget Amendment next week based on the discussions that the staff have had with the county regarding the cable, cable reimbursement, cable fee reimbursement, and also the and also the the, gosh, I just blanked on what you just said, but our.
Insurance.
Insurance dividend.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. So let me give some information about these two items. Both items are in the general fund revenue. So our insurance dividend check for this year, based on last year's insurance claim history, we are going to receive 166,000 for the dividend. They don't usually, the insurance company do not regularly issue dividend. So this year, they issue a dividend of 166,000, and we just received the check today. So that's why we need to add it to the fourth budget amendment in the second reading. And the second item is based on the information from the county, and we had a meeting with them today at 4:00 PM. And we were provided that our franchise fee would be reduced in the third and the fourth quarter in a total amount of about 26,000. So this kind of offset the revenue that we receive from the dividend.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So given that we have the amendment on the floor, we're going to to vote in terms of the first reading, and then we will have an amended version provided this passes the first reading during the second reading. So right now, we're voting on the first reading ordinance approving FY 2024 budget amendment number four. In light of our hybrid approach with the city clerk, please do a roll call in terms of the vote.
Councilmember Fulter?
Yes.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
If that was me, Randy Gibson, yes.
Yes. Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Yes.
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
Okay. The next item we have for vote tonight is a resolution accepting modified administrative regulation addressing process to request, evaluate, and advance traffic calming. Would someone like to move the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulter. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I can't remember if I saw Councilmember Dibala's hand first or Councilmember Small's voice. We'll we'll go with Councilmember Small. All right. All those, oh, gosh, we got to do a roll call. So with the clerk, are there any points of discussion on this item?
I just had one point of discussion, which is just that maybe in July of 2025 and July of 2026, we'd look at the equity and efficacy of the changes that we've made, because that's sort of the point behind these regulations, is that we're trying to be, you know, do a better job with equity with our our installation of sidewalks. And so I, you know, I don't exactly know what that would look like, but I would I would appreciate hearing from staff a year after this goes into place if they think that we've been effective in this change.
Okay. And I do just want to confirm that right now, we're voting on the traffic calming and that there is the the be it further resolved, the process and prioritization tool will be reviewed by the city council. But this is for traffic calming, and then we'll do the sidewalk item next. Great. Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to again say that to some degree, this has been the bane of my existence while I've been on this esteemed body and that the staff worked really hard to address some of the things that were real concerns of mine. And as such, I did want to note that I have not made a stink about the lack of a carve-out for neighborhood associations here. And hopefully, the neighborhood associations can find, or at least ours, can find other cooler things to do with their time than have to knock all these doors to get this survey and whatnot. But that being said, that is in no way an indication of the fact that I want random monies to be going to non-geographically derived groups of people in the city of Tacoma Park just because I let that slide. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, I just a couple of comments, which I had shared last last week. I'm still concerned about some of the data sets that we have, which are larger geographic areas, much larger than the site locations where residents are most impacted. Partly, as a as a as a related to that concern, I think there will be questions of transparency with the ratings, the various scorecard. And I have the the fact that these that the numbers that will be provided lack, as far as I understand, will lack any kind of narrative until and at such time that the design stage goes into effect. So I'm going to raise this concern, but and I will not push any further other than there will be, I expect considerable questions of transparency as we compare the different scores that different projects would 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 be when the priority list comes out. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. And I do just want to quickly ask our our planning manager, Ms. Grisby, a quick question just to make sure that I'm remembering things properly. And at this point, I can't, I don't trust my memory worth a darn. But the just as as a reminder, I thought that that the the scores are things that would be made public because they would be made available to the council. And the council would then have the ability, when we're going through our budgeting process, to have that information available to us as we're making decisions regarding, you know, the actual amount of funds that we want to make available for these projects.
Yes, that is absolutely right. As part of the budget process, all the requests that have come in and been evaluated will all be made public as part of the queue, the project queue in public works.
And as a point of order, Mayor, I hate to be difficult about this, but as a point of order, you've not only said this, but you've said this to us a lot, correct? Like, this has been an over and over thing that you have said, that we're going to get the data, and it's not going to be opaque?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So not seeing any other points of discussion. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fulter?
Yes.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
No.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Yes.
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
Okay. Our next item, our final voting item for this evening is a resolution accepting modified administrative regulation addressing the process to request, evaluate, and advance sidewalk installations and rescinding resolution 201532.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Dibala for seconding. Okay. Any points of discussion on this item? Councilmember Small?
I would like to raise the previous point made by Councilmember Fulter about the sidewalks in particular and equity and their distribution. And note for the benefit of the record and the parties involved that it will be a complex trade-off as you start talking about people who are desiring to age in place and whether or not they're safe on their roads at the same rate and manner as people who are having new children and and we are redoing physical plans, because that's what a city does. And so I trust these regs in the same manner that I did the other ones. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. And I just want to confirm again with this item that, yes, in our resolution, staff will be coming back to us in 12 months to report out on how the process is working. And I think that there's also room for us to, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on Councilmember Fulter's point in terms of equitable distribution of sidewalks across the entire community or based on the criteria that we're that is being proposed.
I think it's both because, I mean, I think that I know that staff has been interested in creating networks that allow children to get to school in a safe manner. So we'll want to look at stuff like that as well.
Okay, great. And I think aspects of that have been accounted for, and we can definitely provide that feedback in the 12-month follow-up with the council. Okay. All right. Not seeing any additional lights. With the clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Fulter?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Yes.
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
Point of order, I keep thinking you're saying hello to her. That's the second time that happened.
Because I'm the only one saying aye. I'm Ms. Councilmember Siemens. He's he's my eye match.
You speak sort of percolate, and so there's a lilt in your voice. And so I would keep saying like, but she's been here.
All right. So we're going to move into our work sessions, if my colleagues would bear with us, because we have our Board of Elections here and members here, and now might be a great time for us to to have this work session. And we can power through? Okay, awesome. So we're going to move into our first work session for this evening, update on planning for the November 5th, 2024 city election, and recommended code amendments. Hello, let me get your mic going.
Can you hear me now?
Excellent, I can hear you now.
My name is Matthew Ling. I'm on the Board of Elections. I'm here with Joe Goldman and Greg LaBelle, who are also members of the board. It should be pretty quick, because I think the amendments are pretty simple. There's three that we're recommending. The first is just to push the the due date for mail-in ballots one day earlier to give the board some more time to prepare the certification on the Wednesday. The second is just to give the board more discretion to take to look at ballots that are coming in through the mail to ensure that they were mailed before or on Election Day. And the third is a little bit of language that enshrines a framework for how to handle Does the city council have any questions?
Great.
I guess we'll start with the first one, maybe.
Yeah, awesome.
Go in order.
Just trying to make sure who's first. I think I see.
I would probably her.
Okay. Councilmember Fulter?
I mean, I don't I don't really have a question. I just want to say, like, I really appreciate how thoughtful you all were, you know, like some philosophical stuff was going on in there about, you know, protecting freedom of speech with the ability to take out the loans and the the issues with USPS make a lot of sense. And so I just really appreciate all the thoughtfulness that went into this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Small?
Yeah. I did have a question about.
Yeah.
How you feel the mail-in ballot disputed ballot process needs to be changed? And if for people that don't have the benefit of having read this, you could talk about it a little, like your discretion or the desired discretion that you guys are asking for in the statutory change.
Sure. That's code amendment number two, which is the postmark amendment. Under the current code, a ballot that's received through the mail on or after Election Day has to have a postmark, which is a stamp. And we've found in the last two cycles of doing this that there's just varying practices from from different post offices. Some post offices don't use postmarks at all sometimes. I think they're supposed to. Sometimes they don't. It's just kind of a crapshoot how that works. We recently discovered, the board did some research into this and discovered with the city clerk, and we discovered that there's additional edition on the envelopes that are sometimes used by the post office. That includes, I think, an orange, it's kind of like a highlight barcode thing, I'm not quite sure. But we've been looking into finding other ways to ensure that the ballot was mailed on or before Election Day. Really, the point is that we want to make sure if we're going to collect ballots through the mail after Election Day, we want to make sure that they were cast before or on Election Day. They shouldn't be cast after Election Day when results start to come in. So we want to, if there's more information on these ballots, for example, this orange code or about this marking, and there's a way for us to access it and to verify it, and it's official data that comes from USPS, we want to be able to use that information to then, you know, hopefully accept or validate those ballots as being cast before or on Election Day.
And for the purposes of of the larger understanding, how many ballots did you guys have last year that would have theoretically been caught up in this mix?
Not that many. I would say no more than 100.
But, you know, if you only get 300 people total in your race or whatever, and it happens to be your area or whatever, and where you get the bad post office or something, that's that's not an insignificant amount. I appreciate what you guys are doing.
That's very true. And the board's posture with all of this is to try to accept as many legally cast ballots as we can, you know? So this is just hopefully another way for us to do that.
The only other question that I sort of had about this is a little bit more obtuse. And it's kind of related to the odd every now and then video bombing that we get from outside parties. And I was curious about whether or not there's been any concern of misfeasance or malfeasance by like outside people trying to get or mess with our election specifically because of the fact that it is to some degree a one-off, because we have these ballots that are enacted by children and have the on one end and then have the ranked choice voting on the other end, that there may be people in the mix trying to make things complicated. So I just I didn't was curious about if 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 that's a hypo or scenario that has presented itself. Have you guys gotten the same kind of random mail that we get sometimes in this area, that kind of thing?
As we get closer to an election, I think people become more and more interested in the process of the election. And we do get, you know, a handful of emails that are asking about the process. And the board certainly is concerned with, you know, the integrity, but also the appearance of integrity of the elections and fairness. And so we try our best to make all the proceedings transparent, the counting, the processing, tabulation. And we're always looking for more new ways to do that. Two years or four years ago, it was more challenging with COVID. But now that everything's opened up and we have kind of our process more worked out, we're hoping that we can have more transparency, more.
Which is not to say you guys did a bad job or anything beforehand. And it's just that, like, since everybody is everywhere at a throat of someone, I just appreciate the efforts that you guys have made to lock down the system.
And we're certainly, you know, interested if the council has any feedback or any ideas as well for for the transparency or, you know, that kind of thing. So we're happy to hear them.
No, bravo though, so far, for real.
Okay. I think I see Councilmember Fulter, do you have another question?
Sorry, just one one more obnoxious thing. If anybody from the board is interested in registering voters to vote at Blair on Friday from 8 till 1, they were looking for a volunteer to do that. So ask your friends and let me know.
You said Friday, this Friday?
Okay. Well, I have just a couple. I think Councilmember Small hit on an important point about the the postmark. And I think one of the things that I appreciate in terms of how you were describing this is that while we want to make sure that we're able to accept as as many ballots as we can, you're also trying to make sure that there is some evidence from USPS that that ballot is actually a valid ballot, right? So I appreciate you all doing that. I do have just one question about the loan, the loan amendment, and just wanting to make sure that I have a clear understanding, because I I recognize, having ran for a council and having ran for mayor, the amount of money you have to deal with when you're dealing with a mayoral campaign is night and with when you're dealing with a mayoral campaign is night and day. It's not the same. And so when we're talking about the, the loans, just so that I'm clear, the loan approach also includes the candidates themselves. So you can basically front-load financially your campaign, right? Which in many cases you kind of have to do because you have to put in orders and things before you're able to actually start raising as much money as you can to pay for those things. And so this, which I really appreciate, gives folks the framework for how to actually document the fact that they're doing that. So that would mean for a candidate or if they are receiving a loan from a financial institution or another individual, right? And I'm just trying to make sure I understand the, what, how would you treat an individual in terms of your documentation versus a financial institution? So when you are doing your reporting, right? Would you treat that individual, let's say, called Daddy Warbucks and he just front-loaded me $5,000, right? Would I treat some portion of that as a, as a financial contribution? Or will there be modifications that will be made to the financial reports that we have to submit to kind of make that point clear? Like, this, this is a loan from Daddy Warbucks that will be paid back. Now Daddy Warbucks can still give a financial contribution to the campaign that reaches their individual max, but the loan itself would be counted separately. I don't know if I'm, I'm making much sense, but it's like a individ, you as an individual can contribute to a campaign, but then there can also be an individual that is providing a loan to the candidate for their campaign.
Yeah.
And those two, that individual could be one and the same. And so how would we make sure that we're documenting this loan information properly in the reports?
So this is certainly the first part of building up the way we'll do loans in Tacoma Park. In addition, there'll be like a, on the website, an FAQ, that'll be pretty detailed to explain how it all works. But also, we're going to update the campaign finance forms.
Okay.
So at Hyattsville and College Park, I think Hyattsville has a specific section in their financial forms that makes it pretty clear how to report campaign, loans to campaigns. I mean, it gets a little tricky too because some loans are contributions and other loans are not contributions. So a loan from a friend that's a zero interest rate loan would be a campaign contribution because it is, you know, it's, it's something that you wouldn't be able to get at arm's length at a bank, Bank of America or whatever, like, you know, it's, so you're, you're getting some money on the zero interest loan in, in, in a sense. But a loan from a financial institution at arm's length, paying market rate, you know, interest rates or whatever, that might not be a camp, a campaign contribution because the bank is not giving you that loan for the purpose of influencing the election, they're just giving it to you to make money off of the interest rates. In any case, all of this will be spelled out in, you know, in the different types of loans, in the type of, in, in the actual finance, in the reporting, the, the reports. And it should be hopefully intuitive.
Okay, that's helpful because, I mean, I think I had a hard enough time just trying to get a financial institution to actually like open an account for my campaign.
We, yeah, we, we've never had any candidates ever take out loans from an institution and I don't really anticipate anyone doing that, but I do anticipate what you described, perhaps a mayoral candidate wanted to front-load their campaign. And I know, for example, the city of Rockville does that quite extensively. Most of their sitting council and mayoral candidates loan money to their campaigns.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Dibala?
Well, yes, that was my question as well, is how this would apply to a candidate self-loaned funds. And I think you just answered that, that you'll be, you'll make, be making that clear during, in the forms proper, that people can loan themselves money and how it gets accounted for and how it gets cleared at the end, assuming there actually is a surplus to pay people back with it. So that was my question too, thank you.
I just wanted to make the point, this isn't just for the benefit of the candidates, it's also for the benefit of the public so that they understand that there's a process, that there's a law that applies to this, that the forms specify this, because right now we just don't have that. But loans are, you know, they are, they are allowed right now. But, you know, having this spelled out in the code and the website should help people understand that.
And, and echoing Councilmember Fulcher's comments, thank you for all the, the work and it was such an easily read report and what you were thinking was really clear. So thanks for that and for running elections.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Okay, not seeing any other lights. I think we are, we are ready to go. So just as, for my colleagues, as a reminder, what will happen is in upcoming, our meeting next week, there will be code changes that we will need to vote on and approve in order for the Board of Election to kind of start that next phase of implementation and education. Awesome, thank you so much.
Mayor, may I say a word?
Thank you. Yes, go right ahead.
So we, that amendment may not come back to you next week. It may take a little longer because the city attorney has not had a chance to review the loan language.
Okay.
So we, we do need him to review that, of course, before it comes to you.
Comes back on the, okay.
And the other thing is, I wanted to mention that Monday, June 10th, is the first day to register as a candidate or political committee for the city election. So that is, that's next week. So I just wanted to point that out to the public and to the council.
And just as a, and I, I think, you know, we, we talked about this previously, how this timeline juxtaposes with the timeline in which candidates can announce and can then begin to fundraise. And so is the idea that we're still going to try to make sure that these code amendments are effective for this election, right? And, you know, what we will really need to do to make sure that, that registered candidates know and understand how they need to manage their documentation. It's probably going to take them a full month to get a bank account, but, but to, to actually make sure that folks are, are, are understanding what they need to account for in, in the process.
Yes.
Okay. Great, so we can talk offline about how we need to make sure we move this item forward. Okay, so the last item on the agenda for tonight is the library update, construction update.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm going to be going over the quarterly progress report of the Library and Community Center redevelopment project this evening. Ian Chamberlain is out.
And I'm so sorry, Jessica, to stop you, but Councilmember Hanzak is having some challenges with hearing, so if you could just make sure that you kind of speak a little bit into the mic.
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you so much.
Is that better? Okay. So Ian Chamberlain is out and Carlos Iraeta has temporarily stepped into his role as co-project manager. Carlos is the city's construction manager and his project oversight and construction expertise has been incorporated into this update. So this slide is a review of the new features we can expect from the finished product. The emphases are on functionality, adaptability, accessibility, inclusivity, and sustainability. And these are values that are reflected throughout the design. We want new facilities to be a place of belonging for everybody in Tacoma Park. So the design is, it's light and airy and it's welcoming and once the library staff are back in it, then the, the art and all the chachkes will follow. Since the last update, we've added several items to this list, including the installation of footings, the removal of the abandoned water line, concrete foundation poured and set, with the exception of a small area that I'll touch on in a little bit, and then the placement of the structural steel framing. And while this isn't a, a part of the completed work per se, we did have a really lovely topping out ceremony last month to commemorate the milestone of wrapping up the steel frame. I've included a photo of it here on the beam that was signed and installed near the roof. I'm really glad that so many people were able to be there for the occasion and I also really like the idea that all of those well wishes are incorporated into the shape and structure of the building. So this is an overview of where we are in the project's finances. We've spent 34.59% of the total budgeted cost of 14 million with about a year left of construction. We've provided a breakdown here of the status of contingency funds as, and the change orders and change directive. The existing contingency funds are about 461,000, which is about 5% or it is 5% of the total contract amount with Doyle Construction. The current change orders and change directive total about 1,142,000. There have been 17 executed change orders to date, as well as one change directive. And I did put a more detailed breakdown in the cover memo, but the most significant items are the change directive for the transformer relocation, that was 530,000. The change order for the delay of the full notice to proceed, which was about 270,000. The floodplain's modifications, which were about 256. The change order for raising existing conduits at 23 and the change order for structural steel modifications at 15, less the original contingency fund that left a gap of about 680,000 before the addition of funding in fiscal year '25 from the general fund and also from unallocated ARPA funds. I'll have more information about the sources from that funding on the next slide. And then after the addition of the general funds and ARPA funds, we have a net positive of 419,000 to cover future change orders or cost escalations. The general expectation is that once we're up and out of the ground, we're, and we're nearly there, the costs should be a little bit less volatile, even if we're still subject to the effects of inflation. So when addressing the contingency fund gap, these are the funding sources that we are looking at utilizing in order to avoid assuming any additional bond commitments. We have the interest from the library bond at 577,000, interest from the ARPA funds at 205,000, and unallocated ARPA funds in the amount of 1,073,000. These funds collectively exceed the amount of additional contingency funds suggested. We would love to find additional outside funding where possible. The Inflation Reduction Act is a potential source for sustainability components of the project, since we are seeking lead gold certification. And of course, we're always on the lookout for additional grant opportunities to mitigate the use of the city's existing funds. In terms of looking ahead on the project's schedule, we've got a short-term outlook here to get us through the summer. We've got new stormwater infrastructure wrapping up on Maple Avenue and beginning on the Philadelphia Avenue side. The Maple Avenue side should conclude by about June 17th, and that includes the pouring of the floor of the trench, the walls, and the bridge to reconnect the pedestrian bridge to the sidewalk. And then for the stormwater pipes along Philadelphia Avenue, that work is expected to begin at the conclusion of the Maple Avenue work, so around June 17th. And that's going to start with the embandment of a sewer pipe that's held up the foundation pouring in that location. And so that is the, the last bit of concrete pouring that I alluded to a little bit earlier. The water main connection in the back parking lot will be occurring at the same time as that work. And then once the water main connection and the foundation are poured, they will install the, the RCP, which is the really massive piping that we saw on site that was being stored there. And that's going to go in on the Philadelphia Avenue side. We've also got the installation of the, the roof and Clearstory, the completion of the exterior framing, the brick veneer, and the beginning of interior framing starting this summer. In the fall, the renovations in the community center are going to begin. That is going to close some additional portions of the main city building. This will occur after summer camps end and are not expected to cause service interruptions. Of course, we'll be continually evaluating that and communicating any unforeseen issues as soon as we know about them. But the areas affected include the, the restrooms and the recreation department spaces. We are still looking at substantial completion around May of next year, but the recreation spaces and the restrooms should be completed well before the library building component. Once everything is done and we've gone through the punch list, we'll be able to move back in and reopen to the public. Our current lease at 7505 New Hampshire Avenue runs through September 2025, so that timetable is still workable with the construction schedule. City and school operations persist around the construction site. We'll continue to meet with city staff regularly to ensure continuity of services and resident safety. We've had a temporary relocation of some HR and housing and community development staff to get us through the end of the framing, but city operations have continued around that. We have not had any lapses in service continuity. And then lastly, this is just a review of the site plan. Many are quite familiar with it at this point, but it's always good to have the visual reminders. I want to thank residents for bearing with us through the inconveniences. We have a really lovely facility at the end of this that we're looking forward to using for many, many years to come. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Fulcher?
I think I have three questions. One, just as we're moving along, if there's any changes where, where the decision is made not to do some piece of the project, it would be really nice to share that with the community. I think they'd be interested to hear, like, if there's any sacrifices we have to make in order to, in order to save money. Second, I saw, is there going to be a teen room in the library and a teen room in the community center? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, there will be a teen room in the library for sure, and then there will also be.
Still be the teen lounge?
Yes.
Great, that's, that's awesome. And then third of all, have there been any thoughts to how traffic will work in, around the library and the community center once the project is completed?
I have not been involved in any discussions with that, if there, if there have been, but that's certainly something that we can explore and we, we have a lot of ongoing progress meetings, so that's definitely something we can bring up.
Just seems like a good time to consider how bike traffic might move more safely through that as I know lots of children, like my own, like to travel to Piney Branch on their bikes. Thank you.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you. Just one, one question and one comment. The comment is, this, this is great, having followed this for a long time. I love to see lines like, we will have construction completed before what the lease runs out at the other place, because that has been a concern all along. And some of the other things that you said were really, were really reassuring. To the, to the cost increases that, I forget what you called them, the, the change orders and the change directives. You went through them kind of quickly, but they don't sound like, most of them are actual costs of inflation increases, but rather changes in the project that were required by regulatory authorities that, that, that looked at the project after the cost estimates were made. Have I got that right? Because you named a couple of big ones. And they were all regulatory requirements that were imposed on the city, the transformer move and so forth. Can you speak to that?
Sure, yeah, the, all of the larger items that I called out were as a result of delays in, in the permitting process. I do know that there have been some concerns with inflation with regards to raw materials that hasn't panned out quite as much as we had feared, which is great. I, I think we are looking at inflation right now more at the soft costs that haven't been assumed yet, like with furnishing, the building and the shelving system and everything. Although the last quotes that we received for shelving were not as high as we had expected them to be. So that's great. I'm, I'm hoping that, that's one place where we can have a little bit of saving.
Well, great. Thank you very much for that. I look forward to the day.
Me too.
Uh, Councilmember Small?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I, it's interesting and I, um, I think I'd like to echo a sentiment, but I'd like to be, uh, ever more direct about it. And, um, the exceeding, uh, cost windfall associated with a state agency that, uh, had never thought of any real concern about that as an issue, um, the entire time that the road existed, suddenly tacking a lot of, uh, extra money onto us, um, to do work for them essentially. Um, so I did want to say that, uh, I appreciated both you and, uh, Councilmember DeBala being, uh, diplomatic about it. Um, but, uh, I am, uh, ever and anon, uh, annoyed at the manner in which bureaucratic policy is implemented here. And that is one of the ways in which policy gets stagnated because rather than spending their budgets on the things that they're supposed to do, they just stick it to people who already have a project and really would like to get it done.
Duly noted.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Um, I am super excited when I see things like, there will be brick veneer this summer? I was just excited that we had a, what looked like a roof. We may actually have something that looks like a building by the end of the summer, which is awesome and I'm super excited about that. Quick question, um, and, and this may be something that we could just follow up on, um, offline, but I was wondering if, you know, this, the county's waiver of that, um, transportation fee, um, of, what was it, 90, 99, 97,000? It was, it, 93? Was, is that accounted for here? Okay, so, so that, those, that savings is reflected in this net funds that we have left? Okay.
Yeah, those, we didn't include those as a, a change order. Um, and because it wasn't going to materialize until the, uh, end of the project, um, it wasn't something at the time we were accounting for, so it's, uh, in a way it's accounted for and Jessica's analysis.
Okay, perfect. And so, um, in terms of, and I think part of this is just, you know, the timing of things just magically seeming to work out in a way that, that is very beneficial because once we get over this hurdle of having the, the larger, you know, the, the larger cost in terms of the actual bill under control and we're dealing more with the soft costs, um, I do think that around the time in which we will be hitting those points, I think that things like the ARPA dollars and a lot of our other programming needs will kind of have flushed out a little bit more, may put us in a better place to know what, how we, and where we may be able to grab dollars if we, if we happen to need them. But fingers crossed this contingency will continue to hold. But I do think that, and you know, and I guess this is a question for, um, for Andrew around the timing of when we may really have a firmer handle on where we are with the library in terms of those soft costs and, versus the hard costs versus when we need to make sure that we've done all of our finalization of obligated dollars for the purpose of ARPA.
Yeah, it, the additional, uh, 500,000 that council added in the FY '25 budget, uh, we can, we can call that obligated at this point, an ongoing project. Um, if we need to add additional funds beyond that, we will need to, uh, ensure that we do that before the end of this calendar year.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add one comment as well. Uh, to Councilmember Small's, uh, uh, accurate comment about the degree to which or the proportion of additional costs that was attributed to, um, regulatory, uh, I'll say delays at the county end frankly, uh, staff did, uh, have a meeting. We, we called in the director and staff for DPS, um, Department of Permitting Services for Montgomery County. To their credit, they were very willing to come down, listen, we had a very collegial discussion, but we also made our points that, you know, looking back, and it's for instructional purposes at this point, because I think a lot of this was water dollars under the bridge. But we did point out just how much additional expense the city bore as a result of, uh, some extreme delays in permitting, um, review, uh, at the county's end and how that was not only expensive but frustrating and, and, you know, delayed the project. Uh, time is money. And I will say I do believe they took it to heart. Uh, I know their director is relatively new and one of the reasons he was put in place was to address things like this. So I'm hopeful that there will be, um, better, you know, more productivity and better relationship in the future. But I wanted the public to know, and, and the council, if you didn't know already, that we're trying to follow up with this kind of thing in the interest of not having it repeated in the future, so that we have other projects and we've got this other one coming, uh, that you all have authorized, it's the, uh, community center, uh, the atrium police department project. Uh, you know, where permitting is, is involved, you know, we certainly need to have a tighter, uh, relationship with county. And, uh, our staff did a really good job of laying out precisely what happened and why it was a problem and I, I think it was duly noted and we will be looking for better performance, uh, from the county on that end. Here, here, Mayor.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, not seeing any other lights. Thank you so much, Director Jones, for coming out and all of your hard work in moving our library forward. It's going to be such an amazing resource. I was actually telling a resident, they said, "Well, you know, people aren't using libraries in the same way that they used to." I said, "Yeah, they use it for meeting space and to convene and kind of bring everyone together." And there are lots of opportunities, far more than we currently have, to do that under this, once this new library is built. She said, "That's a really good way to explain it." So I'm going to take that as a win for some, some folks that maybe have questions about why the city of Tacoma Park has this library. It's because it's a resource, it's a way for us to come together as a community and a way for us to engage our, our kids in a very meaningful way. So thank you for all that you do.
Awesome, thank you. It's a great way to put it. I'm going to use that language in the future too.
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, so with that, um, we're done with our agenda for the evening. Thank you so much, Councilmember Small. Thank you all, we are adjourned.